Hold the meeting to order. We have these citizens in our public comments. Seeing none, welcome everybody. Consideration of approval of the agenda.
Sumo, your honor.
Second. Clerk to call the roll.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Agenda is approved as submitted. Consideration of approval of the minutes of the August 17 and August 24 meetings. Any discussion or questions? Move.
Second.
Clerk to call the roll.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
The minutes of the August 17 and August 24 meetings are approved. Consideration of approval of the consent calendar. Any questions regarding the consent calendar? Move.
Second.
Clerk to call the roll.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Consent calendar is approved as submitted. Business of the mayor. I will mention this at the outset. I suspect the city administrator will have more detail about this, but the... We submitted a pre-proposal to the Department of Agriculture, Natural Resources Conservation Service Regional Partnership Program, and we were happy to see that we received approval of that preliminary proposal, and I'm...
Don't say too much.
Nope, I won't say too much. The follow-up will be the city administrator's piece. Next up, public hearing on ordinance 1086, amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Charles City. I would have changed the classification of a parcel of real property from R-2 General Residence District to B-2 General Business District. Open the hearing. Have an affidavit of publication.
Yes, your honor.
Any written comments or objections?
None, your honor.
Any oral comments or objections?
Move to close the hearing.
Second.
Clerk to call the roll.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Okay, the hearing's closed. Next will be a consideration of a motion approving a second reading of ordinance 1086. Discussion.
Well, the Charles City home for the aged, they own the property at 302 North Grand Avenue, commonly referred to as Starr Home. This property is currently zoned R2 General Residence District. Now, the Charles City home for the aged, they have a proposal from Mr. Dennis Donovan to purchase a building and remodel it for a professional office space, so they have petitioned to rezone the property from R2 to B2 General Business District. On Tuesday, August 4th, Planning and Zoning Commission, they met, they held a public hearing, and they have passed a recommendation of approval to the city council to approve this ordinance amendment. The council completed their first reading of this ordinance amendment at their last meeting, as well as setting the public hearing for tonight. And tonight is the scheduled second reading for the hearing, for the ordinance amendment, and we recommend approval of the second reading.
Questions or discussion?
Have there been any comments or any questions from anyone that you guys are aware of?
No.
I would so move for the second reading.
Any further discussion? Clerk to call the roll.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Upstayed.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Second reading is approved, and we'll have a second reading.
Ordinance number 1086, an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Charles City, Iowa, to change the classification of a parcel of real property from R-2 General Residence District to B-2 General Business District.
Public hearing on 2015 PCC paving and water main repair project. Open the hearing. Have an affidavit of publication.
Yes, your honor.
Any written comments or objections?
None, your honor.
Any oral comments or objections?
Move to close the hearing.
Clerk to call the roll.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Okay, the hearing's closed. Consideration of Resolution 106-15, approving final plans and specs. Discussion.
Well, the council approved the preliminary plans and specifications for this project and authorized taking bids at their last council meeting on August 17. Now, leaks have been detected on the water mains on Kelly Street between Illinois and Howard, as well as on the water main at South Main and South 4th Street. These leaking mains will be repaired, and the concrete paving will be replaced. Now, also, settled payments on Boulder Avenue between South Gate Drive and the Hogslas Building, and on Park Avenue, south of First Avenue, will be replaced, and settled areas will be filled. The project will also include some payment replacement within the city-owned parking lots. They're adjacent to Breitbart Chiropractic Clinic Office, Lit Cordray, First Security Bank, and Hy-Vee. We've also added to this project the sanitary sewer repair work at the intersection of Hewland and North Illinois Streets. Hewland was a part of the first permanent paving project four years ago. At that time, a sewer, sanitary sewer manhole was replaced, but the existing sewer main underneath the permanent paving was not replaced. Since then, we just have discovered where the connection between the new main and the old main join. A hole has developed, and we're actually losing material from underneath the street, and the brick pavers are starting to settle, so that sewer main has to be repaired. This project will be funded out of the water fund, the sanitary sewer fund, as well as local option sales tax monies. Now, there were two addendums issued to adjust quantities, as well as bid item descriptions, so the final construction documents essentially match the previously approved preliminary plans. So we do recommend approval of Resolution number 106-15, approving the final plans and specifications.
I suppose our project has been completed long enough that there's no recourse back for any of the problems with the other planes?
We've got the final specs, and they're conforming with what you want to do. Is that right?
Well, the project four years ago, that was completed. The plans and specifications showed only the manhole to be replaced and not the sanitary sewer. The contractor did what the plans showed to be done.
That's where then, that's where you have the problem, is the older existing sanitary sewer line.
Further questions or discussion? We're on 106-15 at this point.
Got to fix it, so I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Clerk to call the roll.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Resolution 106-15 is approved. Consideration of Resolution 107-15, awarding contract. Discussion.
Well, this afternoon at 2:00, we had a bid opening. Unfortunately, we've only received one bid, that was from Heartland Asphalt from Mason City, and I've provided you with a tabulation of Heartland's bid and the engineer's cost opinion. Heartland's bid for the work was $222,371.55, and our cost opinion was $199,000. As I've noted, Heartland's bid is approximately 11.7% above the cost opinion. However, nearly 90% of this cost difference is, results in two paving bid items. The 12-inch PC concrete replacement work and the 7-inch PC concrete replacement work. The work on South Main Street at 4th Street, that's a part of Iowa Highway 14, and that actually will have 12-inch thick paving. The remainder of the project will have 7-inch thick paving. Now, we feel that the work on Kelly Street, that's the water main work, as well as the sewer work at Hewland in Illinois, these two items need to be completed yet this year, and we have a completion date on that part of the project for November 6. The rest of the project can be completed next year with a May completion date. We actually set that up in order to try to garner more interest and get more interest from contractors by spreading it out over a longer period of time. Unfortunately, we didn't, we really don't have time to wait to get some of these items done, and this isn't the best time to bid work. Contractors are busy and not available to take on additional work. But Heartland Asphalt, they're a reputable contractor. We've actually completed multiple projects with them successfully, so we'd recommend the council award the project to Heartland Asphalt. Also, in order to minimize time, allow the contractor to start work right away, we're asking, in addition to awarding the bid to Heartland, to authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the contracts and bonds once they're received from the contractor. So we'd recommend approval of Resolution number 107-15, awarding this project to Heartland
And we've talked about this in the past, that, you know, sometimes when we get these late-season bids, we don't always either get the best prices or we don't get, you know, the competition, so unfortunately, you know, some of these things just can't wait, as you said, so I'd so move.
Is there a second before we?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Was there, the reason for not getting any additional bids, was that because of the timeframe? Wanted to get it done this fall?
Well, really more, everybody's busy.
Pardon me?
Everyone's busy.
Yeah.
Just, it's hard for them to take on additional work.
They're in town now to do some other work for us.
Other questions or discussion? Clerk to call the roll.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Resolution 107-15 is approved. Consideration of Resolution 108-15, approving agreement with AMR. Discussion.
Well, as we talked about at our last council workshop, we looked at renewing a contract with AMR, our ambulance service provider, doing a three-year renewal, and one of the things we're looking at and was AMR's, you know, presentation of their loss and the deficit in operations, and one of the considerations that they were asking the city is to forego some of the revenues that the city receives from AMR, including consideration of rent, dispatching services, and the reimbursement for fire department ambulance staffing. And we looked at a, we looked at a scenario that I emailed out to you late last week, and then I printed off a new copy and just handed out tonight, so it's, there's nothing new from, since last week on there, but just so you had a hard copy. But basically, kind of shows what revenues have been from AMR coming into the city, and then just, you know, recently, a couple of years ago, we reorganized and did some changes to the way we operate, so we're actually operating with less overtime at the fire department for calls. And so, what we initially looked at was a reduction in that amount for ambulance staffing to match our overall overtime call-out. That's where we kind of left it after our last discussion. Then, last week, looking at this, and talking with Mark Corley from AMR, he proposed adjusting the way the service is offered in that when we respond to a call outside of the city limits but inside the fire district, we still have a fire department driver either respond to the scene or respond to a rally point where the AMR person meets and it takes over. And Mark had proposed maybe changing that so that AMR would respond directly to that, come to the station and respond. Thought about that for a little bit. I think one of the concerns that I would have with that would be its potential impact on response time, so we looked at, we looked at an option for keeping that response mechanism in place, and when we looked closer at what our overall expenses are for our fire department over the last couple of years, they've reduced quite a bit when it comes to ambulance calls, and we're actually looking at about, you know, about a $4,000 overtime amount of expense that we have in that part. So what I did was then I further adjusted down the ambulance staffing reimbursement to be about 300, to be $350 a month for that first, for that first year, which equates to $4,200 a year, and that would offset our $4,000, $4,200 estimated expense in overtime. When it comes to the dispatching fees and the fire station rent, I froze those amounts for the first year, and then for the years two and three, I applied the, what is, our somewhat standard 5% increase on there. So that's what we're looking at tonight, is a proposal that would basically reduce that monthly ambulance staffing amount from about $1,958 a month to $350 a month, so that'll help bring down the expense to AMR, plus it closer matches, pretty much exactly matches what our anticipated overtime is that we expend through the department, which it really shouldn't be, just kind of a cash flow scenario there, so. What we're looking at then is basically, over the next three years, an overall reduction in revenue of about $22,000 that the city would be receiving for reimbursement fees, and then just a little bit off on the rental and the dispatching. And Mark and I exchanged emails late last week, and he was, he was open to this offer and thought that this would be a workable solution.
Further questions or discussion?
They are agreeable with what you're proposing here?
What's that?
They are agreeable with what you're proposing here?
Yes. I mean, they're looking at a deficit of, you know, anywhere between $74,000 and $85,000. This will cut that by about $21,000 on their side, so. And it matches, it matches what our expenses are, so that's fair in my book.
And we still will be sending the firemen out to the rural area?
Yeah, there's three different call levels, basically. There's in-town, which a call comes in, fire department responds to the scene, AMR meets them at the scene, and the fire department firefighter gets a ride back to the station from our police department. And in that situation, we don't have any, typically don't have any call-outs for an additional fire department member to come in and watch the station, because it's such a short timeframe. The next level is where we respond to a call that's outside of town but still inside the fire district. And again, we have a fire department driver that responds to that, and they either meet at a rally point, or they meet at that location, and then they get a ride back. In that case, it's usually for an extended period of time, and so we call, we call a person in to watch the station, which creates our overtime expense. And then the third level, if it's outside of town, outside of the fire district, AMR just responds directly to that. And I would think typically, that's usually kind of more of a non-emergency transfer-type situation.
Outside of the district?
Right.
We do a lot of 911 out, but...
I need to have you.
Rockford and things like that, so, sorry.
But if it's, if it's outside of town, inside the fire district, it's still usually a high priority call, so I think it's important to try and keep those response times as quick as possible.
I think the response time is very important.
On this, you know, I very much appreciate the service that AMR provides us and things like that, but I guess it really concerns me that they're running a deficit and things like that, that do we need to be checking into other alternatives so that we're just not caught flat-footed at some point where they can't provide the services that they've agreed to?
It would probably, it would be in our best interest to be thinking about those options, because at some point, you know, they might not, they might want to, like you say, cut their losses and not be operating at a deficit any longer if they, if it can't cash flow.
I mean, I truly mean that. I appreciate very much what AMR does for our community, but at the same time, most businesses can't run for very long in a deficit situation.
They have professed their want, their want to stay, and they have no intention of pulling out and leaving, but, you know, things can always change, that's fine.
Well, we're looking at a three-year contract, and Delaney's line of thinking, we are losing some revenue, but we are still covering our costs, but we need to be aware of what's going on in the next three years, so if we do have a problem, we look at it ahead of time.
Yep, very true.
Is it, my understanding is the shortfall is all out in that third layer, right? The furthest away from Charles City.
I don't know that that's the case necessarily. I think it's just a lot of overhead and a lot of expense with operating that type of
Well, if I remember right, it was the, a lot of it was the difference in the billing and what actually, if I get this wrong, Medicare Medicaid actually pays, there's a big gap there.
The receivable and what's actually received type of situation. Yeah, I think so.
I'd so move for Resolution 108-15.
Clerk to call the roll.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Resolution 108-15 is approved. Consideration of Resolution 109-15, approving transit agreement. Discussion.
Basically, we're looking at our renewal for our transit agreement that we have with NIAAC, who provide area transit, and we're looking at a, there was a proposed price increase for student tickets. We offer ticket sales for elderly and disabled and students, and typically, they've all been a dollar apiece, and with this new contract, we're looking at going from a dollar apiece to a dollar fifty apiece per ride for students. So there will be a new blue ticket that will be for students only, and so those tickets are available here at City Hall or NIAAC or the actual, the transit bus itself. The general public, we do not sell tickets for. Those are $3 a ride, and those are just paid directly to the driver at the time of service, but otherwise, for elderly and disabled, it's a dollar. For students, it'll be a dollar fifty. So there's a slight, little slight pricing change there. And basically, we're also, we're also looking at a, we currently reimburse $3.75 per ride, and that's been requested to increase that 25 cents to $4 even per ride to the driver itself, so we're just looking to approve this contract to renew our transit agreement.
I think, I think you know my position on this transit situation, I think it's a very good service to Charles City. They do a very fine job. I've had many compliments, particularly working with clients at the Starr Home. They do a good service. This, it is put up for bids, and we've never had another bidder on it. From NIAAC puts it up for bids, we've never had another bidder on the contract, and it costs the city of Charles City round numbers $80,000 to $90,000 a year. So with that being said, I'd go along with it, but I think that's something that's significant that we need to keep an eye on.
I'd second.
So that was a motion?
I guess so.
Okay. A second. Further discussion?
One thing I'd like to mention is anybody that's bought, that has bought tickets for students at the dollar rate, those will still be good. They'll still, you know, they'll still take those until those are used, so just, anybody that's bought tickets, they're, if you have them now, they're going to be good until they're used, so.
I think we just still need to keep on working with them to try and come up with a better system of accounting for the ridership.
Yeah, you...
Nice to know.
That's the problem, Delaney, they don't have accountability on the ticket sales.
Further discussion? Clerk to call the roll.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Okay, Resolution 109-15 is approved. Consideration of Resolution 110-15, approving storm sewer agreement with Doug and Vicki Kronloggi. Discussion.
Well, Doug and Vicki Kronloggi, they own the property at the northeast corner of the intersection of First Avenue and Central Avenue. This property currently has a sump pump that discharges and empties into the First Avenue right-of-way between Central Avenue and Park Avenue. Now, as part of the middle school project, the city is currently developing and paving First Avenue, so what we need to do is, part of this project is to get that sump pump discharge water away from the subgrade and discharge it into the sanitary sewer, or storm sewer City Attorney Ralph Smith, he's drafted an agreement between the city and the Kronloggies that provides for the extension of the sump pump discharge pipe to the new storm sewer system. The agreement also addresses and stipulates that future maintenance is the responsibility of the Kronloggies or future property owner. It also releases the city from any liability related to the connection of this sump pump discharge pipe to the city's system. So I recommend approval of Resolution 110-15, approving the agreement with Doug and Vicki Kronloggi for connection of sump pump to the city's storm sewer system.
I'll move. Second.
Do we have anyone else in town that we have an agreement like this with? Curiosity.
I think we have a similar arrangement with, on the property that was formerly owned by Russ Schroeder over in that same neighborhood.
Okay. I just was curious. I mean, I just, in the years that I've been here, I hadn't recalled that we have one, but...
Yeah, I think we had a similar arrangement there.
I don't really see any problem with it.
No.
It just, it all gets there somehow eventually anyway, so.
Actually are seeing in some subdivision developments where they stub in water, they stub in sewer, they also stub in a, like a 2-inch drain that connects directly to the same, to the storm sewer.
I know we talked about that here a few years ago, about not having storm water running, you know, like down your driveway and into the street and carrying all the debris and stuff with it, so.
That's how the newer allied subdivisions are. They have that sub-drain pipe.
You know, the storm sewer is going in the storm sewer line too.
Yeah, yeah, and not elsewhere.
Not elsewhere.
Yes, we do. Motions?
Yep. Clerk to call the roll.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Resolution 110-15 is approved. Consideration of Resolution 111-15, approving participation in the Mid-America LED program. Discussion.
Yeah, Mid-American is our area provider for electric and natural gas, and they have recently come up with a program to replace all of their high-pressure sodium street lights with LED lights, and their plan is to basically do that, to do a gradual replacement over the period of 10 years. What they're doing with this program is they're giving communities the option of doing a customized schedule. If you want to, for $100 a light, you can choose to have them replaced on a quicker schedule, and then you'll be paying the newer LED rate. And so, recommending that we approve the agreement with Mid-American Energy to do the custom option, because there's a couple, there's a couple options right now with 250-watt, these are the larger ones, the 250-watt and the 250-watt. options right now with 250 watt, these are the larger ones, the 250 watt and the 400 watt lights, that it, they pay for themselves in one case, just under two years, the other one, just under three years, to go ahead and pay the hundred dollars a light and have those replaced, that you'll be, you'll be money ahead after about six or seven years. So I would ask that the council approve this agreement to do the custom option, which we replace out our choosing, and we'll, we'll do it as, as it seems feasible to us and what makes sense financially.
We talked about this workshop. That makes a lot of sense. Go ahead with it.
Did we, we talked a little bit about checking some out or having someone go look at some of these where they've installed them elsewhere? Did you see just kind of what light they do, throw at intersections and things like that? Did we get that done, or?
I've seen them in action.
Okay.
We, we talked about maybe doing, putting, getting out some sample lights, and I know we talked about the one in the intersection down here, Brantingham and Grand and Gilbert and Freeman. I haven't followed up with that yet with Mid-American, but I will do that to call them, put them in and see, see what the light is that it gives off. But my experience and what I've seen, it's a very, it's a very clean light, and it, in a previous community, I'd, I'd seen them, seen them replaced, and it was, it was, it was a nice change. It was well, well-received by the, by the citizens, and it was just a lot cleaner-looking light and illuminated things a lot better than high-pressure sodium did, but we'll get some, we'll get some sample ones in here so we can kind of get a look and a feel for them.
Okay. Did you get the kind of financial savings that they'd predicted that you'd get?
Actually, we had. That was the impetus behind the swap we did. There's, there was, there was federal stimulus money first and foremost, and then we also, that paid for half of it, and the other half we paid with a zero-interest loan through our electric provider, and then the cost savings, we, we used that to pay for that loan, and so we were, it was saving quite a bit of money every month and then annually, too, so that makes a big difference.
Now, I like that, saving money.
Yeah.
And now our current lights, I mean, they illuminate, you know, 360 degrees, whereas these new fixed directional, if you would, LED are going to be illuminating where we want them to illuminate, not necessarily the sky where we don't have a lot of vehicle traffic, hopefully.
You hear, you hear some talk about light pollution, and that's essentially what that is. Light just going to go wherever. With LEDs, they, each one, they can focus each one to work for that particular situation, so it illuminates the street, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't bleed off onto the, somebody's front porch or up in the air or anything like that, so it's, it's very economical in the way it can be directed for that specific purpose.
And I spoke previously to this, one of the, actually last year's League of Cities Conference, as they were discussing, you know, one of the big pushes, and we're doing that as well, is residential housing above the businesses on Main Street. And when you had the lights that we currently do around, whether it's not necessarily those, but where they're shining up, it's uncomfortable for people to live up there because it's like living in a hotel. It's light shining in your eyes constantly, whereas these new, these new lights out there are going to be focusing down where it's needed, not necessarily up, up in the air, which is another benefit of this.
Is there any difference in the cost between, there's different color involved in the light that's emitted, yellow versus blue versus, is there any difference in the cost or has that been evaluated?
Between the color, the spectrum?
Well, as opposed to affecting cost?
Yeah, I think, basically, you, what you see is you've got a spectrum between, when they first came out, they were all a pretty stark blue color, and then as you go to more of a white, up to a warmer yellowish color. The technology wasn't quite there yet, and what technology was there made it very expensive to go that way. The lights that you're seeing nowadays are really in that, that white color spectrum, I guess. It's, so it's, it's not a blue light. It's more, it's more of a whiter or clear light. It won't be as yellow as the current ones you see now, but it won't be as blue as the early LED or if you remember the old mercury vapor ones that were bright blue. First they were bright blue, then they went orange, and then they blew, and now they're kind of white and clear, what you're seeing, so.
We'll have light, though.
We'll have light.
Good.
Another side effect of this, then I'll move on. Also, at last year's League of Cities Conference, there's, depending on how they're placed, there's potential we may be able to eliminate a light here and there. I don't know if that's something we're going to, we're going to watch for, but that's another thing they talked about, is because you are focusing more light down on the street where it's needed, you may not need as many lights, so, you know, maybe we'll, maybe we won't. All depends on placement, so.
I think that's, that's true, but on the flip side of that, a lot of our street lights are spread out pretty wide on the, on the, on the off-residential streets, and so what you'll be able to do is you'll be able to put a light that, that spreads out further that will be less, you'll, using less wattage, but actually focusing on a wider area so you actually get more light and actually better visibility, so it's kind of a...
It's good all around.
Good all-around deal, yeah.
I mean, it's good all around. I'd so move.
Second.
Clerk to call or roll?
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Okay, resolution 111-15 is approved. Consideration of resolution 112-15 approving submittal of letter of intent to participate in the Main Street Challenge Grant Program. Discussion.
Want to walk us through this, Mark? Basically, we have the property at 1006 North Grand, which Stacy and Stacy Ackerson are looking to reuse that property, and, and we're going to be, they're applying for a Main Street Challenge Grant, and, and Mark can tell us more about it?
Through Main Street Iowa, we had the opportunity to submit a grant application for the Main Street Challenge Grant. Each Main Street Iowa community can only submit one application. We had an open application period, and one application we had submitted was from Stacy and Stacy Ackerson here in town for 1006 North Grand. It's the old Charlie Western Railroad building, that two-story building there, right next to the three side tracks. The spur is right there, and that building has been long, unused and deteriorating. They are proposing in their project grant application to do a complete rehab and preservation of that building, redo the front, first floor for commercial. They'll put a insurance office in there, and then redo the second floor into two one-bedroom apartments aimed primarily at our transition corporate new hires as they look for our permanent housing. I know Stacy's been having conversations with some of our corporate businesses on that aspect. They're also looking at utilizing, there's a series of concrete piers behind that structure that have long been overgrown with weeds and such. They've been there since the dawn of time with that building. They are looking at reusing those into storage units. So this is a pretty comprehensive project. It would seriously improve the look of that property on that end of town where we're looking at trying to get some new development going. It would be a great addition to that neighborhood. Our business is a very quiet business. It's not disruptive whatsoever, and they're actually looking to bring back the building to a lot of its original look. They're going to reuse a lot of the wood that's inside there, and it's a project we're very excited about. As part of the Main Street Challenge criteria, it requires support from the community in the form of a letter of intent to participate and support in this. I know the city's been really good to work with. John and Paul Hughes have come out and looked at the property, did not have any major concerns. We've got some good input from them, and they're also looking at what we need to do to make sure we comply with all zoning and, and other requirements. This application is due at the end of this week, so with your blessing, we'd like to have the mayor sign a letter of intent. We're off and running. It is a very competitive grant. There's less than a million dollars available statewide, and there'll be 53 communities with a chance to apply for this. So it's very, very competitive, but we feel really good about our chances with this project. The Ackersons are here if you have any questions.
Actually, a good project. I think it'll add a lot to that area. Further discussion or questions? I'd so move.
Second.
Clerk to call or roll?
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Resolution 112-15 is approved.
You should get the original on there, so you can sign whatever one you want. Sorry, Mark.
Getting your exercise tonight.
I could have made it into a paper airplane, I guess, and flew it at you.
That would look great on the application.
Yeah, thanks, Mark.
Consideration of resolution 113-15 approving minimum assessment agreement for commercial property for McQuillan Place. Discussion.
Part of the agreement that we had with McQuillan Place when we put the developers agreement together last fall was the minimum assessment agreement, and basically what the minimum assessment agreement will do is establish a base minimum value of what the building needs to be. And what we have before us here, actually the next two items, are the two various assessment agreements. We have a building where we have main floor commercial and, and upper floor residential, so we have a minimum assessment for the main floor value and a minimum assessment for the upper floor value as well. So that's what these two agreements you have before you basically establish are the two separate amounts, and those amounts will guarantee the property tax to be generated, create the increment that will help facilitate the loan towards the project. So, council's permission, we'd like you to approve the assessment agreement for the commercial and approve the assessment agreement for the multifamily residential portion. The grand total of the assessment's going to be $7 million, $207,780.
How is that just divided up?
It is divided up. The commercial portion of it's going to be about $3,171,423, and the multifamily is the larger portion. That's $4,036,357.
I didn't go back and look through all of our original documentation that we got when we started down this path, but is that anywhere close to what we thought it was going to be?
That's the exact number we talked about.
Same numbers?
Yeah. That all of our agreement and, and our numbers are based on that number.
On these numbers. I thought they sounded like the same general vicinity, but I didn't know.
Further discussion or questions?
Are there any timelines that are of any concern here as far as any construction progress or anything like that for assessment?
The main deadline we have coming up is going, will be January 1st, 2016. By January 1st, 2016, that's when the assessor needs to be able to assess the building for these amounts. Now, the city and McQuillan Place have agreed at that number, but we also have to have substantial construction along the way for that number to be able to be assessed. And in talking to the owner, the building is going to be encapsulated and closed by this winter, and so by January 1st, the project should be further, far enough along the way so that it'll be able to be fully assessed at this amount, and the assessor has told me as such, too, so. But that's, that's the next big deadline is January 1st this coming year, because what establishes on January 1st of 2016 will dictate the, the assessed value of tax receipts received in fall of '17 and spring of '18, and that would be year, year one, basically, of any principal and interest payments.
Okay, so basically, in 120 days, that building has to be up and far enough along that the assessor can assess what's there.
Correct.
And we feel comfortable that that's going to happen? Yes. I guess I...
Further questions or discussion?
So move for 113-15.
Second.
Clerk to call or roll?
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Resolution 113-15 is approved. Consideration of resolution 114-15 approving minimum assessment agreement for multifamily residential property for McQuillan Place. Discussion. We just had that discussion, basically.
Think we've had it. I'll move for 114-15.
Second.
Any further discussion regarding the residential property portion of this?
I could mention the, the reason we have different assessment agreements is because there's different rollback forms applied to residential, as applied to commercial, so that's what we're addressing by doing two separate ones.
Clerk to call or roll?
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Resolution 114-15 is approved. Next is a mo, consideration of a motion to go into closed session pursuant to I have a code section 21.5c to discuss strategy with council in matters where litigation is imminent.
I would so move, Your Honor.
Second.
It's a motion to close the, the session. Clerk to call or roll?
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
It will go into closed session.
See you tomorrow.
Ms. Lanes' correspondence.
We have a letter here stating that our follow-up parking lot cleaning is due the week of September 21st, so we need to get something lined up and contact community revite, let them know when we're doing it and how many people are doing it and all that good stuff, so.
Well, it'll be the guys who don't go to the conference.
I would recommend the 24th.
Yeah.
Is that the 24th or 25th?
No, 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 no.
After the 21st.
No, 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 no.
Or the week of, the week of.
It is the week of, so.
Only because I'll be gone that week, so I guess I can't win that argument, right?
Yes.
Okay, anything else?
Yep.
Say attorney's report.
Nothing.
Say clerk's report.
Yeah, bless you. We have our next planning session on September 16th.
Okay, 16th.
Mm-hmm.
Say administrator's report.
Three rule brief things. I, we received a nice thank you from, from Tim Fox from the area development corp I put up there that passed down the line thanking us for the...
He got halfway.
What's that?
He made it halfway.
Okay. Thanking us for the HVAC replacement at 401 North Main, which I was there that last day that they were putting it in, and it was plenty warm, even in the basement, so. They got it up and running, and so they're, they're very grateful. Mark is, Mark Wicks has shared the same comment.
Regardless what it costs to get a thank you from Tim is great.
I think we need to frame that and hang that up as proof.
Yeah.
So, so that was nice. Secondly, I just wanted to let everybody know that John, who's no longer sitting here, I got a notice from the Association of State Flood Plane Managers that John, he attended a flood plane management course here a couple weeks ago, and he has been certified by the ASFPM certified flood, as a certified flood plane manager, so.
If I wasn't impressed before, I am now.
But everybody...
So now the next time that some group of experts comes in and tells us that all sorts of stuff's in a flood plane, John can stand up and say something instead of Steve and I.
Can he stop a flood?
Start out, Steve.
I'm short of stopping the flood.
Keith and I.
I think that's the next level, when you can stop them.
His hourly rate as an expert witness just went up.
This one, he was not here, so just...
And then lastly, as the mayor alluded to earlier, I, leading into the Labor Day weekend, got a nice, very nice email from that, from the RC, RCPP grant people, the federal grant that we submitted our pre-application for, and we have been selected to move on to make the full application. It's a highly competitive grant. It's, we're, we're looking at about a $2 million projects or a little over a million dollars in grant funding to help set up and address sub watershed issues north of Charles City, and we've got a lot of partners on this, and so in the, in the email I received, they... I received, they, they alluded to how competitive it was, so it's, 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 it's very nice to know that we made it past that first round, and now we get to really fill out the grant application, so, uh, we're excited, we're excited for that process and look forward to, uh, completing that in November with, uh, with an award will come in January, so. Um, additionally with that, we've got a meeting set up next week with, um, Fox Engineering, who's our engineering firm with, uh, the waste water treatment plant, and, um, set that up, hoping that we'd get accepted for this pre-application, but even if we didn't, to help lay out our goals for the waste water treatment plan over the next several years and what we can expect, what we're gonna be looking, uh, at needed, you know, potential additional upgrades.